All right, the call to order of the Hancock County Commissioners Meeting for April 9th, 2024.
Yeah, I'm going to move this off the agenda as presented with the exception of adding request approval for Euro via Atlantic Construction LLC Change Order Number Two. Move, and that's under the, the last item under the airport. Remove and relay, and relay concrete pipe on, excuse me. I'll start over. Request approval for Euro via Atlantic Construction LLC Change Order Number Two. Remove and relay concrete pipe on Crusader Drive is item six D. Approval of Aristic Mental Health Services Incorporated Mental Health Contract for the jail is item A E. An update on state police sharing, uh, call sharing is item nine C. Since significant inconvenience may result if these matters are postponed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. That was powerful.
Somebody?
Aye. Move to approve the minutes of March 26th, Commissioners Special Meeting is presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Miller, in person.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
By government monthly report. Coming up on 4 July 1st, we've got six trash removal contracts and three fire removal contracts. You would expect all of these trash contracts, the prices to increase. Just because of the situation. Door is closed. Fiber right isn't functioning. Jump bridge is full and everything has to be transported into our job. Which can back so eventually.
I'm going to move to accept and file UT monthly report is presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I didn't preempt anything else. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you in person, Miller.
All right, we need Ryan.
Well, good morning. Um, I guess I don't really have anything to add to the report. It's, uh, you know, they're out here working, so as long as the sun stays out, maybe we'll make some progress.
I move to accept and file airport monthly report is presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Ready? Do we have your grant applications or something?
Yeah, yeah, this is just a standard, um, you know, somebody's got to sign an application so we can ask for a grant for the, this is the planning portion of the snow removal and equipment building. This will be a part of the bipartisan infrastructure law money that we've been receiving, so that's where that's going to end up coming from.
I'm approving the grant application for snow removal equipment building design. Permit and bid support and authorize the chair to sign it on behalf of Hancock County.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So the next one is the, the little portion of pavement that wasn't eligible in front of the terminal building. We figured it would be best to just do that, to have one continuous, nice, brand-new pavement. And this was actually, I added it to our budget this year, so.
Yeah, we're talking about this during the budget.
Yeah.
Okay. So I move approval of pavement addition of all number one to AIP number three dash twenty-three dash zero 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 six dash zero six zero dash twenty-two-three project in the amount of forty-two thousand four hundred. Authorize the chairperson to sign it on behalf of Hancock County.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, and the last one was that, uh, popped up that the culvert, concrete culvert had, uh, separated there when they started, uh, digging. They noticed it, so it was below the grade of where they was headed. So that's why it's a change order.
Move to approve the Euro
Yeah.
Yeah, Atlantic Construction LLC Change Order Number Two. Move and relay concrete pipe on Crusader Drive, chair to sign.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That, that's all I have. But you got anything else for me?
All right, Andy.
Morning, Commissioners.
Got your monthly report. Do you have anything to answer it?
Uh, no, I don't, Commissioner, unless you have any questions.
Move to accept and file the EMA monthly report is presented.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
All right, now we hear the request for.
Yep.
This was discussed at last week's meeting.
Yep. I'm going to move to approve the purchase of one Xerox Versalink C seventy-one thirty color multi-function printer to be included in the EMA office for the sum of four thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. Be paid for with upper funds.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Disco year twenty-twenty-five.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this morning. Uh, back last August twenty-three, Sheriff Kane and I collaborated in, uh, by submitting a Department of Justice grant under the burn BYRNE program, uh, for some specific equipment. Uh, for the sheriff's office, that was on cameras and cruiser cameras, uh, large work equipment. And subsequently, I was solicited by Senator Collins' office to submit, uh, proceedings of grant application for FY twenty-five term, which expires on April twentieth. The opportunity to apply. And this was the only meeting between them and then to, uh, see if it would be interesting having you go forward and pursue a grant to acquire that equipment. And subsequently is expanded for all law agencies in Hancock County, all the requests.
So I'm going to move to authorize the EMA Director Andrew Sankey to submit a twenty-twenty-five congressly directed spending application on behalf of Hancock County to thirty body worn cruiser mounted video cameras. Video camera recording systems.
Well, well, Commissioner, that, that has changed. That was the original grant. But now we're interested in seeing expanded to all law agencies in Hancock County.
Okay, so on behalf of all.
Law agencies in Hancock County. That excludes the KIA law majors because they're federal.
Here, so it should read. Move authorize EMA Director Andrew Sankey to submit a twenty-twenty-five congressly, congressionally directed spending application on behalf of all law agencies in Hancock County for body worn cruiser mounted video camera recording systems. Does that do it?
Yes, sir.
Side of motion.
Discussion. Um. How is this related to what we've already talked about? It's the same exact thing that we've already talked about. It's not a difference. Does does take off of the list of body cameras remaining.
That's, that's, I understood it. That's the purpose of this, right?
Yes, but the, but the timeline of this is approximately nine months. It's not going to fall behind this.
Well, probably if we wouldn't apply for this and then we had the bias. If we're going to do this and then we, then we're not going to apply.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, yes.
This is, this is a hedge.
Yeah.
Yeah, this would be my, and then if we get towards the deadline, then we move forward.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners.
And I apologize, I didn't quite full, I didn't.
No, that's all right, Andy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning. Hires?
Yes, new hires, yes.
Yeah, I move to approve hiring Chris Shaheen of Stone to the part-time on-call as, as needed. Correctional Officer Effective Four thirteen twenty-four at a pay rate of nine A with benefits.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks. Uh, move to approve hiring Brian Decker of Hancock as full-time Corrections Officer Effective Four thirteen twenty-four at a pay rate of nine A with full benefits.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, the next one, there's some blanks to fill out.
Yeah, um, the name is going to be, uh, Jared Young. He's a Corporal in G R now.
O D?
E D. K A R E D.
Yeah?
Yep. In the pay rate, I think, to the ball, they don't have that, I just trust that Monica and Marion and I, I couldn't avoid step. It's just, uh, a lot of moving from a and to a lot of step ten to step eleven, a little bit.
Okay, so I'm just going to leave that out. I'm going to move to approve Roger Jared, uh, Young, the Community Corrections Specialist Effective Four thirteen twenty-four. That, if you do it, I'll tie it on with that.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And the next one is, uh, speaking with our attorney at the conference call with Michael, myself, and Lieutenant Shepherd. I've talked before that our contracts are pretty, pretty vague that people are signing. He's requesting us to go over an RFP, um, under main statutes as reported by going RFP, but this, this is just for drafting an RFP. So he's requesting approval.
And the contract too.
And did do the contract, yeah, the grantee's contract, which we, and then it's just this filling that we've altered most of the process. Reviewing the contract, proposals, all bids. Request approved to hire Peter Marquesi to develop an RFP in contract for correctional health service for the sum not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
So move.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And you have.
And this is the addition. I'm going to move to approve, uh, the Aristic Mental Health Services Mental Health Contract for the jail to be funded by the National Opioid Settlement Fund, Funds as requested.
It's a six-month contract for now.
Uh.
For thirty-six thousand.
And that's the rush of the, we're hoping to have this RFP drafted by then, so for the nineteen ones out there.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'll re-read it. I'm going to move to approve the Aristic Mental Health Services Incorporated six-month mental health contract uh, in the amount of thirty-six thousand dollars for the jail to be funded by the National Opioid Settlement Funds.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Good morning.
Good morning. First off, please, vehicles that we're going to be speaking about. I just have, I believe it's something that you guys were reporting as well yesterday, but I just have my packet in case you don't have it in front of you. You'd like to have some numbers spoken.
Thank you.
So in regards to vehicles, I'd like to, uh, basically speak about the initial proposal since that wasn't specifically addressed in the previous meeting. Uh, that way, you know, the people watching and citizens maybe have some more context as to what we're actually discussing and, uh, the things behind it that we're asking for. Uh, as you guys are well aware, you know, vehicles are brought up year after year, uh, without function vehicles, we're able to do our jobs to cover the great area that we do. I'm going to be able to provide the same level of service to the citizens of Hancock County. Sheriff's, Sheriff's Office currently has a fleet comprised of twenty-six vehicles. That's fully encompassing to include vehicles assigned command staff, detective patrol, civil deputy, all the way down to our spare vehicles that we utilize while our frontline vehicles receive maintenance. Uh, we currently have twenty-one deputies as of today and we are budgeted for twenty-two. We do anticipate presenting a name for hire at this next Commissioners Meeting coming up. We had just been, uh, completing some background, uh, investigation packets and such. Which is why we didn't get it on the agenda for this meeting. With that being said, we'll be quote-unquote full staff as far as what we're budgeted for positions. Uh, having four, four spare vehicles or cruisers provides us with a working number. When our frontline vehicles are receiving maintenance, as it's not rare to have three out of four spare vehicles being used at a given time, we also allow the GL to utilize some of our spare vehicles when permitted, uh, in order to assist with prisoner transport, prisoner transports, uh, which further are needed for four spare vehicles. We currently roughly have about one spare vehicle for every five or six vehicles, uh, per front. With that being said, as I'm sure you guys are all aware, uh, that we had spoke about in the previous meeting, we had swapped or switched, switched over from purchasing the Ford Explorers, the Chevy Tahos back in twenty-twenty-one for a multitude of reasons, whether that be maintenance, um, and the ability to have more of a stable storage as we are continually, uh, requested to carry more equipment. Uh, in that previous meeting, we also discussed maintenance costs. Uh, I went back and pulled the maintenance records since January twenty-three so that we actually have, uh, numbers to put towards the actual service appointments that we had discussed. Uh, with that being said, since January twenty-three, we spent thirty-eight thousand one hundred and seven dollars and seventy-nine cents on maintenance performed or done on vehicles from twenty-twenty-one and older. In the same timeframe, we spent fourteen thousand two hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-one cents to have maintenance performed slash done on vehicles from twenty-twenty-two and newer. During this timeframe, we need to service our older vehicles twice as much as our vehicles that are within three years old. I bring this up to illustrate the difference in money being spent to maintain older vehicles with higher mileage. It should also be noted that many of the repairs of these older vehicles, which contributed to that increase in cost was far more expensive due to the age and need for more significant repairs, uh, as they were, got up in higher mileage. Uh, a few weeks ago, we were discussing again, uh, vehicles and the Chevy Tahos and what was available. Uh, in the previous meeting, it was discussed, you know, what was the difference for the ability to purchase or utilize passenger car vehicles. Uh, P P V designed vehicle is, or a cruiser. Uh, I provided attachment that I believe uniquely addressed the points previously made by Commissioner Clark in the March twenty-six Commissioners Meeting regarding purchasing passenger car vehicles instead of P P V. Uh, with that being said, the attached articles outline the distinct advantages of P P V designed cruisers, why they're beneficial for both practical applications, but also in regards to safety applications. In addition to these benefits, Chevy Tahoe is a larger frame vehicle, which provides additional protection in the event that cruiser is involved in a crash. Uh, I also have Sheriff Morton from Knottscott County sitting behind me, which uh, will be available for any questions and to provide their insight as far as what they've utilized for fleet vehicles as well. Uh, in a recent example of Chevy Tahoe, Knottscott County, they had a deputy that was involved in a crash involving a sideline. In that crash, uh, the deputy was operating a Chevy Tahoe and received minor injuries as a result. Had the deputy been operating a smaller vehicle, they would presumably have sustained more significant injuries. Uh, I provided an excerpt as well below in this, uh, proposal detailing only select few differences between passenger cars and P P V designed cruisers. A pursuit vehicle is often, uh, referred to as pursuit rated vehicle. It's a special type of vehicle that is modified and equipped to handle the rigorous demands of police work, including high-speed chases. Here are some different key differences between pursuit vehicles and a regular vehicle. The performance, pursuit vehicle are built for high-speed, hard braking and rigorous driving, which we often do every day, or they often have enhanced performance capabilities and other features. Durability in regards to that, they, the vehicle is pursuit rated. The OEM or original equipment manufacturers adjust the standard vehicle, doing things like changing the calibrations for cooling, the transmissions for different, the suspension components. This makes for a more durable vehicle to withstand the demands of police work. The special equipment, when we talk about that, pursuit vehicles often come with special equipment that's not found in regular vehicles. This can include pursuit rated tires, brimbo brakes, heavy-duty cooling systems, the wiring that's already pre-ran to install lights, which wouldn't be an additional cost around passenger car vehicles that don't have that wiring. The interior design, the interior of pursuit vehicle is often designed with less amenities to keep costs down and to accommodate the needs of the police equipment that we install. Uh, it's important to note that the term pursuit rated is just the title. Doesn't mean that the vehicle is only used for pursuits. It's making a stronger vehicle that's capable of doing all the jobs for a police officer that we may come upon. And that's the real benefit behind what we refer, refer to as a P P V vehicle. Uh, we were previously, in the previous meeting, I discussed how there was forty black Tahos made available. We know that in a, uh, the recent budget workshop, there was a statement made about vehicles, uh, that Quarks had available in the upcoming future. And with that being said, we did our due diligence as far as, or what I believe did our due diligence as far as looking into that to say that we've explored our avenues. Uh, and I'll touch on that in just a minute. The next part to this is that, uh, we would propose purchasing, uh, vehicles through I T S. I T S is not new, or Island Tech Services is not new to the county. We use them for certain maintenance already on cruisers and they outfit vehicles, uh, that is supplied by McGovern. McGovern is who we purchased vehicles through the last two years. It only makes sense for the tax, it only makes sense uh, for the taxpayers of the county and citizens of Hancock County to utilize the savings where we can. And in doing so, uh, it, it makes sense where I T S is located in Maine rather than McGovern's in Massachusetts to eliminate the hands that these vehicles go through and to basically take that cost savings by doing that and, and give it back to the county. So with that being said, we would, uh, propose to have these vehicles, uh, purchased and outfitted through I T S. We would still have Brown's Communication, uh, install the radios as a way of keeping some local business involved in these cruisers or in the production of these cruisers. In recent months, speaking with Brown's Communications, they've expressed that the work done by I T S, or also known as McGovern's in a sense, is of good quality and that it made their job easier when it came to the radio installations. Uh, in order to maintain our current fleet, as we've discussed in the last couple of meetings, we would need to replace four vehicles this year. By purchasing four vehicles, we'd also be looking to sell four vehicles. And I've listed those vehicles and those private sale values below for the vehicles that we would be looking at selling. Now, I understand that those private sale values may not be in reality what we get, but it gives us a number to work off of, at least to, to put on paper and say we would get something in return. I've attached the current list of our fleet, which includes the year and vehicles and mileage. You'll also see that I've marked the vehicles to be replaced, the vehicles to be sold, and the vehicles that would be transitioned spares. In twenty-twenty-two, uh, when we purchased vehicles or Tahos from McGovern, Massachusetts, the cost of those vehicles was forty-three thousand dollars a vehicle per those Tahos. The complete outfitted cost was fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. A few weeks ago, the vehicle price that I had proposed at that time was Chevy Tahoe, it was the P P Vs for fifty-four thousand with a complete outfitted cost of seventy-three thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars. This showed an inflation per vehicle of eleven thousand dollars with a slight inflation of the equipment to outfit those vehicles of three thousand dollars. Since the budget workshop on last Tuesday, like I had said, mentioned, uh, with the comments about vehicles being made available to Quarks, I, we had reached out or had I T S reach out as well and would get the options available to us as far as acquiring vehicles from Quark Auto Group and if it would be a price savings when those vehicles would be expected to land and such. What we learned is that Quarks does have, uh, twenty, uh, black P P V Tahos on order. They're slated to arrive in June. They're currently being product, uh, produced right now or manufactured. Uh, some of those are spoken for, however, there's still enough available that would meet our needs of what we're requesting. In addition to that, I T S was provided a price from, uh, Quark Auto Group of fifty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars per, uh, P P V Tahoe. This is a savings of a thousand nine dollars per vehicle from the additional quote that I had provided you guys in the previous meeting. What this would do effectively is it reduces the cost of a fully marked Tahoe, uh, twenty-twenty-four P P V Tahoe to seventy-two thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars. With that being said, the updated number of the total funds that we would be requesting in order to purchase and update our fleet and continue this rotation year after year. The, the total amount that we'd be requesting this year to replace those four Tahos is two, two hundred eighty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-one cents. In addition to that, I would request additional, or access of additional funds up to two thousand dollars payable to Brown's Communication for the radio installations. And that number doesn't obviously not account for any money that we would recoup, uh, from the sale of the cruisers that I have slated or outlined to be proposed. In this, uh, number, I T S would request two payments. The first payment requested would be in the amount of two hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars. And that would be upon receipt of those Tahos from Quark Auto Group, at which time they'd be titled to Hancock County. Upon the receiving those vehicles and being titled to Hancock County, after completion of the outfit of the equipment, I T S would re-request a second payment of seventy-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars eighty-one cents for the remainder of the amount proposed. And that is what we would be proposing to update our vehicles for this year. Now, I understand you guys might have some questions, uh, regarding this. I also, like I had mentioned, have Sheriff Morton, who was, uh, was presented this proposal as well yesterday. Uh, so he might be able to speak as far as the Tahos, their experience between Ford Explorers and Tahos because Knottscott County has also had uh, and what they're tradition, transitioning to and why, and he also may be able to, uh, touch on the availability or cost of those. If you guys have, you know, further questions beyond what I'm able to answer.
Just a quick note, Dakota, when you are doing these reports for us, uh, would you please date those so we can tell if they preview or preview? So we could sort of look at if it's a refresher, if it's new information.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Is that two thousand dollars for Browns per vehicle or total?
No, that would be total. I had communicated with them and they estimated approximately three to five hundred dollars per vehicle for the radio installation. They, they, if I recall my conversation with them correctly, I think they estimated approximately around three hundred and fifty. I didn't want to run into the scenario where I had to come back and ask for more money or anything like that, so that's why I set up to, uh, two thousand dollars.
So Dakota, um, I did look over the vehicle. The only thing that, when I look at it, that, uh, I have an issue with, I guess, is just that, so you've got the total of the difference between the two, but you're not, you're not notating how many vehicles are in each one of these. So when I look through it, the older vehicles, about to nineteen vehicles that are listed when I look at the unit numbers, and then the new vehicles are at the twelve that are listed there. So it's not quite double.
I would just touch on that. That would, that number that you just mentioned, that would be thirty-one vehicles, but we don't have thirty-one vehicles.
I know. That's why I don't quite understand, because when I go through and I look at all the units, the unit numbers, I assume that's the the unit number, right?
For, yes, the, the confusion on some of those that you might see is that based on some of the invoices that were documented, some, uh, wrote down the license plate number versus the actual unit number. So there is some discrepancy, which is why I had to go back on that particular invoice to say, okay, they wrote down a license plate number on this one, but what actual unit number is that? So there is a little bit of discrepancy as far as that goes.
Any of the numbers didn't match up to how many units we really had?
No.
Or I couldn't figure. Or I couldn't figure out if like, it's some units, kind of what was going on, but. I do think like you need to look a little bit too, though, at what proportion of new vehicles we had, old vehicles. Concerning all vehicles, obviously, that's also one of the reasons why, you know, the costs are higher. Not just a dollar.
Right, and I don't disagree. Um, moving forward now that I've put in the legwork to do that.
Yeah, let's keep it up to date.
We're, we're, yes, exactly. We're looking at keeping it up to date and also uh, rather than distinguishing them, you know, by years. Let's distinguish the cost by vehicle. That way it's easy to pull that.
Yeah, you can look at uh, the vehicle. Well, this one's a dog. I mean, maybe it's one that's on the borderline. Let's get rid of the dog and whatever.
Well, regardless, I think even though your numbers went great, I think we could see that perhaps the expenses we're making. Proportional to the age of the vehicle, the number of vehicles we have. Bottom line is, is that, not including used parts, twenty-six vehicles last year. And spent sixty thousand dollars to repair it. Twenty-six hundred dollars per vehicle. We can replace these vehicles, some of the sixty to seventy-five thousand dollars. And I don't see the logic in spending four hundred million dollars to save twenty-six hundred dollars a vehicle. So I'm not sure if I can buy the exorbitant cost that we're spending to repair our vehicles. So anyways, I'm not totally sold on the fact that we. But I think before we talk about how many vehicles, we should be talking about what kind of vehicles we love. Nobody here disputes the fact that a certified police vehicle handles better, is more durable. Than any passenger car. But for the last forty years, this county has purchased passenger car vehicles for the sheriff's department, for the sheriff, chief deputy. Patrol attorneys, detectives. And in the last forty years, I cannot think of one critical car accident that this group has had, this commission. Passenger car vehicles. I can think of an awful lot of that we've had with certified police vehicles. Earlier this winter, one of their deputies told me one of their vehicles, the brand spanking, the safest vehicle we could offer. Now, I taught emergency vehicle operations at the county years ago. One of the things we stressed in cadets. No matter what you're driving, drive, don't drive beyond your capabilities, the capabilities of the vehicle and the conditions. This cruiser that was totally, was totally preventable, beyond his capabilities, the capabilities of that vehicle. How do we get for the, for the vehicle? So I'm saying to you, where is the evidence to support? After forty years moving, this group of individuals in the sheriff's department, from passenger car vehicles to. Certified police vehicles. So Paul, I'd like to relate this to a hypothetical for you, knowing your situation whatnot. Do you have an enclosure at your house and whatnot to keep your dogs? All these years, it's been a page wire fence. You decide to do some groundwork and move the fence and build a roof. The contractor says to you, he says, you know, chain link fence is more durable and safer than page wire. When you're in the hardware business, you know that. The thing is though, is that where is the evidence after all these years and all these dogs, that page wire hasn't served you adequately? And that's the same analogy. I use that analogy, but it's the same, it's right where we are today. After forty years of giving this class of people in the sheriff's department. Passenger car vehicles that has served them well, we're now getting this, oh my god, scenario of. We need safe vehicles for this group of people. And yet they're unable to give us one situation, one critical, critical situation that occurred, some imminent. Emerging situations in laying there or something to tell us that this is warranted. Because, well, honestly gentlemen, when we look at this critically, the difference between buying equipped. Passenger car vehicle, buying an equipped, unmarked passenger car vehicle. That Dakota is, is talking about is somewhere in the neighborhood of sixteen thousand dollars. And that's one gap.
So, excuse me, go ahead.
And so I'm saying that not only is this an increase today in what we need to pay for vehicles. But I can tell you that if we allow the sheriff's department to start giving. Police vehicles to everybody in the other part of the world. That is an expense that we're going to have to face every year down the road. Then a couple of years and whatnot, gentlemen, we're going to be faced with having to replace a vehicle. We don't have ample funds to take it out of. It's going to come out of budget. And at some point, the reality sets in. We shouldn't be, we don't need to be paying this much. It's going to be a fat too late to do the clock back. We need to know that every decision we make today, we're going to have to spend in Apple phones. What's the impact is going to be in the future? I do not believe this warrants giving this group of people, employees of the sheriff's department. These expensive vehicles, we could save tens of thousands of dollars, not, not only this year. Several years down the road in the budget by continuing the tradition of giving passenger car vehicles.
So, if I may, what I'd like to stress is, I mean, to me, I think it makes more sense to put the police, police design vehicles. Rather than passenger car vehicle. I, I bet you on that. Uh, in that regard, you know, when we're talking about passenger car vehicles. Let's talk about a passenger car truck. That's what we currently have. Let's say we replaced it for a passenger car truck. Regardless if it's a passenger car truck or a P P V Tahoe, you still get a, spend the expense to. Outfit it with lights and things like that. You're still going to have that cost. Now, when it comes to a passenger car vehicle, we've outlined the differences. And as, as Commissioner Clark outlined or uh, stated, we have been fortunate. Our uh, command staff has not been involved in accidents as far as backed as our community. However, if we are talking about safety, um, abilities between the P V, P P V Tahos. And we acknowledge that they do have additional safety components. I think that that would be the most responsible decision to equip us with that. In addition to that, I would also uh, like to bring to your attention that when we're talking about a passenger car vehicle, specifically a truck. We can directly relate back to a few commissioner meetings ago. Where we approved the purchase of one for the district attorney investigator. And that vehicle was purchased for fifty-five thousand, or fifty-four thousand. Uh, one of those two, the numbers bounced back and forth in the last commissioner meeting. I'd also like to draw your attention that the P P V Tahoe with the additional safety components that we're proposing is fifty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. Well below that fifty-five or fifty-four thousand dollar number that that passenger car vehicle is purchased for. And in addition to that, this has those safety features that we are asking for our own protection.
The problem is, is that. I quote these numbers for the passenger car vehicles, totally equipped. Because we don't know, we don't know what we're getting when we spend sixty-eight thousand dollars for an equipped, unmarked. Police, police vehicle. And you start to think about it, from what I remember. You have a, a passenger car vehicle for the, let's say the chief deputy. And you take the available equipment out of the vehicle that he's got, the cruiser, I mean, the, the radio, the sirene. Laptop or whatever, you put it in a new vehicle and then you might supplement it with some new L E D blue lights. But for two or three thousand dollars, you now have this, this passenger car vehicle ready to go. But this fifty-three thousand dollar vehicle that they want to buy a Tahoe. Turns out to be sixty-seven thousand dollars when they buy it from I T S. So that's a dramatic difference in why. I mean, we're getting now one of these, oh my god scenarios. I mean, the same, oh my god scenario we got when they needed uniforms. Oh my god, they're not going to make brown uniforms. And when they said, oh my god, we're civil liability problems for, for uh, policy procedures. We need certification programs. Oh my god, we need, uh, deputies are, are in danger because they don't have the latest greatest. You know, sights on their, on their guns. I mean, you've got, anyways. This was created by the sheriff's department, this whole notion that there was a safety problem, the sheriff's department, but this group of people having. Having uh, passenger car vehicles. My apologies, gentlemen, you should reject it.
So Commissioners, uh, Sheriff Morton did come down here from Plom Scott County. I know that they've uh, experienced similar. Um, instances and their transitions as well. I'd like to give them the opportunity to, to speak to you guys a little bit regarding that. So that, you know, you, you have the ability to ask somebody outside of just our sheriff's office that doesn't have necessarily a bearing in whether or not we get these vehicles. But might be able to provide some further insight into any questions that you guys might have.
Sheriff Kane.
I was just going to say, one of the, one of the suggestions last time is that we take two of the Tahos that we have, take one from the detective and take one from. Uh, one of the lieutenants that we have rotated in patrol. But I just want to remind that one of the detective that has that Tahoe is doing the same thing that a previous detective did. Um, as he is a detective and a firearms instructor, and he justified purchasing uh, the, the big S U Vs. To transport everything that they had. So that's really, I, I don't see what the difference between, it was okay then, but it's not okay now. So, I have a question. You're saying, uh, Bill, that for the. That we could utilize passenger vehicles, uh, instead of Tahos. You know, for command staff. Here, we're, I'm assuming that the unmarked one is for command staff. And that the other three, so really, we're only talking one vehicle here, Bill.
Yeah, but three of the six I'm talking about already have certified police vehicles. And if you took those three vehicles, you assign those to the frontline patrol. And then you, and some other suggestions for better utilization of the vehicles they have. And if you followed some of those suggestions, gentlemen, we wouldn't have to buy certified police vehicles summer. We could simply supplement that fleet with passenger car vehicles. And we could save this year alone, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars just this year. Because first of all, I can test the need for more vehicles if we did that. Because first, I'd like to see, and I think we all have talked about, we'd like to see vehicles have at least a hundred and ten, you know, the pickup trucks. Hundred and ten, hundred and fifteen thousand, talking to the dealership, a five-year-old pickup of a hundred and fifteen thousand still yields more than ten thousand dollars traded. And so I'd like to see if we lived, if we held them to the hundred fifteen, hundred twenty mile standard. That we'd only have to buy probably three more uh, plastic car vehicles this summer and whatnot. And the total savings, as I said, would be something in the one hundred and thirty to one hundred and thirty-five thousand. Then we come back late with all. And we talk about how many certified police vehicles we need for twenty-five. Get purchase orders in place like December thirty-first for spring to June.
If I may, Commissioners, I'm not entirely sure what you're referencing with six people and three cruisers. We don't have that for staffing.
We're not talking about the sheriff, chief deputy, two, two lieutenants and detectives.
Okay.
That's six people. Chief deputy has a certified police vehicle, lieutenant does, so only detective. So three out of the six are certified police vehicles.
That's not accurate.
Well, that's not accurate.
The number of vehicles that you're talking about, that's not accurate. If you look at that list that's provided. We have one of our detectives and one uh, lieutenant that has a uh, P P V cruiser.
What's your chief deputy driving for, a vehicle?
Pickup truck.
Which pickup truck is that?
It's a twenty-one, I believe, or twenty-eighteen Chevy Silverado, passenger car vehicle.
Yeah, there's one, two, three, four Silverados.
Okay, so that.
And a Traverse.
Correct.
That would, that would be two. And the other problem is, is that here we are, if you turn the clock back, agreed by our Tahos. Because they were more durable, they were better vehicle and whatnot, and hopefully we could get a hundred, hundred and ten thousand out of them. And this proposal is taking them off frontline with eighty-three thousand, eighty-nine thousand, seventy-four thousand.
Like I had mentioned in our previous meeting, that is the current mileage they have now. That's not the mileage that they would have when they'd be taken offline. They would be in the nineties and they would still be utilized as spares then. So it'd be very uh, practical. Or you could presume that they would be into the hundred thousand mile range, um, when they would eventually get cycled out. Uh, in regards to this passenger car, uh, dispute regarding P P V vehicles or passenger car vehicles. You know, like I had said, I, I, I'd like to offer Sheriff Morton up to any questions. Because they've gone through similar, similar things. So I think that that might be able to shed some light under some of the questions that you guys have. And outside of maybe just me up here with our sheriff's office, um, being able to explain that too.
Well, I'm going to tell you right now that, and I'm glad to see Sheriff Morton, but there is another spiel here. That certified police cars, that are durable, that handle better and whatnot. But if Sheriff Morton's open mind, I'd like to hear the reason why. Our history of using certified passenger car vehicles hasn't served us well. And what happened all of a sudden, it just started last year, what happened all of a sudden? That requires this urgent need to have P V, uh, certified police vehicles for everybody.
Commissioner Clark, with all due respect, it's not an urgent need. We're looking at replacing vehicles and they are a cheaper option for what we're requesting. Than a passenger car vehicle that you're proposing. I think it's safer, it's a cheaper option for our people. And I, I think that it makes most sense in regards to uh, Sheriff Norton being here. He was asked to come here and presented with the same proposal, because in the budget meeting last week, you yourself said that you would like to see a neutral third party to weigh in on that. And so I, we've done our due diligence with going to Quark Auto Group as you suggested. I've done our due diligence with bringing that third party here, and that's what I'd like to offer to you guys. You know, it is, I think this is a, a responsible, reasonable um, request. You know, I understand it's a lot of money, but the cost of everything has gone up over the years. Uh, the, the request of a P P V Tahoe with the safety features. In regard, that's two thousand nine dollars cheaper than the passenger car truck that we just purchased a month ago. The county did to the eighth office. I think that's a reasonable uh, uh, proposal. But with that being said, like I said, I would like to offer Sheriff Morton up to any questions that you guys might have.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Sheriff.
One word from Plom Scott County. If I can digress just for a second. It was maybe forty-something years ago, but I toured the whole rail and I just remembered it, driving and into the front of it and seeing the buildings. It happened to be this young sheriff who took me and my dad, who was a part-time deputy, through that old jail. And while I've seen it's changed, the world's changed. And I think Commissioner, going back to your point. Why are we changing our practices of the agency? That's, that's not why I'm here. Uh, but it's something to consider, Commissioner. Sheriff, um, time has changed. Things have drastically changed. The challenges that we have in replacing our vehicles today are impossible, nearly impossible. Uh, just pre, uh, post COVID, we started noticing that it was, that it was harder and harder to get our Ford S U V vehicles. Taking the safety aspect right out of it. We couldn't even get that. I hadn't taken a new vehicle in, in a long, long time as the sheriff of Plom Scott County. And when I finally took one of Ford S U V, it was towed four times. The last time we left it on their lawn. The money that we've spent in those Fords have been tremendous. So moving to a Tahoe that's been much more reliable for us has been, became a change. Uh, we're finding that our service fees are, uh, even on gas. Look at the gas prices, you can believe that. I'm shocked that our Tahos are doing better than a Ford's were. And I think some of that is that probably now working is hard. Bigger engine, heavier vehicle, um, that it might be counterproductive, but that's, this is true fact. That is absolutely what we're seeing. I don't know how Commissioners, you can put a price on somebody's safety and comfort in those vehicles. Having a vehicle that's safe to be in. Gentlemen, as you know, Sheriff, you know personally, this is these men and women's office when they're out in the field. And, and it's one thing that this uh, vehicle helps protect them, but it's also their office, a place where they're doing most of their work. We're asking the, as again, as we're talking about changing times, uh, the amount of equipment that these young deputies are carrying in their vehicles are incredible. We need that. While we're responding to incidents all over the county, uh, that's an issue. As of, as uh, the purpose of why we have all of our vehicles the same. It gives us the flexibility to change those in and out of our range. As of, as the purpose of why we have all of our vehicles the same, it gives us the flexibility to change those in and out of our agency where the need is. We just lost, we had a tractor-trailer truck crash, one of our deputies, and I, I, to this day, you know, I even get choked up for a second to think if he was in a smaller vehicle, what would have happened to him? It could have been a bad situation for him. And we're fortunate that we had switched over. But just simply trying to replace that vehicle was a nightmare for us to try to find out. We still not, still have not got a replacement for that vehicle. So we had to go back to our pile of cars that we had. The last thing I'd want to do is put my sergeant into a private sale, via a private vehicle, civilian vehicle, and make that his primary patrol vehicle until we can figure out when we can get him in the car. So having those for us absolutely made sense. You rotate them into your spare vehicles, you're gonna get a couple more years out of those. You want those to be your police vehicles, not a standard car. If you're, unfortunately, if you have a crash and you have to replace a vehicle, you can take from those. It gave our agency the opportunity to adjust those cars in and out of any of those positions. If we gained a new position, I know that you folks, like all of us, are trying to gain more deputies and try to not to do it through the budgets, whether you're getting another contract in one of your communities or a school resource officer that comes on, or wherever it may be, and you're trying to find them a vehicle. Having all of the same vehicles might make sense for you folks to build a transition out of that. So I just add that, I will add that it's, it's been a great tool for us. It's a, I, I, I'm certain I've not listened to your meetings, but I'm certain it's similar to why I was listening to the cost of wages for deputies. It, it is a, it's something that's not just with the Sheriff's Office, law enforcement all throughout the state, and some of the things that we look at, rather than putting all of the money into wages, can you put them equipment that makes them safe and effective to do their jobs? I think that's one of the questions you might have to answer today is, how important is that? How much are we gonna take care of our deputies provided with equipment to do the job today? And as, and as I understand the points of Sheriff Clark to me, and Sheriff, I would say, man, it's changing. And Ben, you know this, the world is changing around us. What we see today, what we could have done years ago, you know, we have been the job for thirty years, we saw tremendous changes in our agency when we had tried some of these things at different times. And I, I would only just close, I would hope that we wouldn't want to wait for that circumstance when you absolutely needed it, whether it was a command staff person or a detective responding. Some of my detectives have responded to some of our most serious events, our shootings, sometimes they're the first line person there. Having them in a safe responsibility probably makes sense. So I just share that and welcome taking any questions that you might have. I do appreciate the opportunity. If I can digress for one, one second. I do want to thank Commissioners, I want to thank the Sheriff and the jail administrator. We, as you know, Palm Scott County struggled for years with our jail. We still haven't quite figured that out, but it's a great partnership to have with Hancock County that has helped either trade inmates with us or board. I think we've helped each other back and forth, but something that probably doesn't get said enough. We appreciate that, and thank you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you, Sheriff, thank you so much.
And Deputy, you, you are making a case for sole source.
Hey.
And that's because of availability and pricing?
It's a combination.
So what's, what's happening here is, I don't, you've sort of touched on it, but I'm not sure I fully understand it. We're buying these vehicles from, from ITS. And IT, so in other words, ITS is buying them from Quark, outfitting them. And then we're purchasing, because you talked about vehicles being titled to us. So are we buying them from Quark or are we buying from ITS?
So in order to obtain the vehicles from Quark and, and make this work as far as how they would generally do things, how ITS would generally do things, is they would obtain a vehicle from the dealership, they'd outfit it, they'd give us one month some price, right? We'd pay that.
That's right.
Well, I do want to explain that a little bit because we would pay that under normal circumstances, ITS would then credit the dealership, Quark is unwilling to do that. So ITS is willing to make this work, of course, ITS is willing to pay that cost of the cruisers upfront in order to not tie up their money for long periods of time. They would like payment upon receipt of those vehicles and they would be titled to Hancock with the remaining payment being done, or some paid upon completion, yeah. So we would only be paying ITS.
So the normal procedure, if we're not talking about sole sources, we have a purchasing policy, you go, they go, I, I understand this. You've made a case that that's not what's happening. But normally what would happen is we'd, we'd say, we're buying four vehicles, you'd go out to bid to them, and then we would, it's, so we'd buy them from whoever wanted to bid, and then we'd outfit them, and then we get the vehicle. That's the
Yes, and that's
Traditionally, that was the
Correct, and that's similar to what ITS does, right? They, they utilize multiple dealerships, so they, they source it out to get the best pricing available because that obviously makes their proposals more appealing. And so they, they get the best pricing available. And then as a way of saying, well, it's a one-stop shop, we'll give you that same pricing, we'll charge for the outfit, and that's, you pay one single source supplier essentially. These vehicles would be obtained from Quark.
Okay, so like move it, move it. There must be other people like ITS, right?
Uh, there is McGovern down in Massachusetts who we've gone to the last couple of years. However, ITS outfits some of McGovern's vehicles, so it's kind of, by going through ITS direct, it's eliminated the middleman or the amount of hands that these vehicles have to exchange through because every, everybody's gonna want their slice of the pie, right? So by doing this, it, it does get us the best pricing.
And you feel that, that this is a cost savings?
I do, yes.
So I'm just looking for justification. Okay. With all that's been talked about, I, I understand why we're, we're wanting PPVs. I agree with you. I'm a little worried about the issues that Commissioner Clark has brought up moving forward. You know, what do we do when, when we have to start paying for these vehicles out of the budget? But to be honest, I feel that this proposal might help address that down the road because hopefully they'll last a little longer. That's, you know, that hasn't been proven yet, but that's my thinking. So I, I, I get this. I also get the, the, you know, you're dealing with all the same vehicles eventually. I'm not sure we're gonna be able to sustain that moving forward, but again, we don't know that yet. And I am not seeing huge savings by, you know, not buying a PPV, buying a regular vehicle and then outfitting. I think you've made a case for that and just, you know, putting them on, on my paper here, you know, some of the numbers that have been tossed out, I think they're pretty darn close, so that's one reason.
They are even similar. They are even similar. Because when you take passenger car vehicle or pickup truck.
Fifty-three thousand.
Well, he referenced, he referenced this fifty-five thousand old pickup at the DA's office, but that was a wake-up call because we got involved in a fifty-five thousand old deal, only to find out that we're specing out vehicles that we shouldn't be. When I ask you, what's the difference between your fifty thousand, your sixty thousand, or heated steering wheels and power seat, wait a minute. So when we had to go back to the DA's office and buy another one, we paid that damn, he bought it for less than fifty thousand dollars. So we can buy, you know, we told him, you can't, jail limit's fifty thousand. He bought something for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if we buy passenger car vehicle for these six, for these six people, and we transfer the available equipment from the one we're retiring to that and add solo, you're only talking two, three thousand dollars and whatnot. So why are you talking about vehicles we might buy if, if the rebates were for forty-six, forty-seven, three thousand? You're buying a fifty thousand, your equipment is lying in quarters for fifty thousand. They're gonna take that same need for unmarked from ITS, and it is sixty-eight thousand dollars. It's eighteen thousand dollars more. Now, if you don't understand that, we shouldn't take any action today until you have, till we have confirmed, what are these numbers?
Well, I do, I do understand that.
Well, what, don't you understand the difference between fifty and sixty-eight?
I, I do. But I'm not sure that transferring from a Ford to a GM is gonna yield the savings. And, you know, I don't know about the county, but in where I was previously, we figured that we could reuse equipment two times in a vehicle. After that, it just didn't make sense. And to me, I'd rather be in a position where we're starting out new and maybe we can do some transfers later, because I'm worried about what happens after this ARPA fund, these ARPA funds are spent, and I would rather be in a better position when that has to happen than now.
Just to touch on that real quick, Commissioners, I'd like to point out is, you know, how you had mentioned that you would like to start new. Our, we don't have any other option to outfit these cruisers. The cruisers that we would be cycling out are older model Ford Explorers. Even if we were to get a newer model Ford Explorer, so that equipment does not transfer. If we get a PPV tile, that equipment does not transfer. So no matter what we look at for equipment or for vehicles, the equipment that we have now will not transfer. It's been cycled through a couple of times already. It's in twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen vehicles. We would, I mean, to go new is really our only option to outfit these cruisers as far as the equipment. And that is a point that you had made, you know, moving forward, we would be able to utilize the same equipment when these vehicles get cycled out down the road, you know, as long as we get a similar vehicle that it would fit into.
Well, here's the other problem with this. In actuality, we're gonna buy these cars from Quark. And then we're going to give it to ITS to equip. Right. Well, if we buy from Quark unmarked at fifty-three thousand, and we, we pay sixty-seven, eight from ITS, we're gonna pay fourteen thousand, eight hundred dollars for a company to equip this vehicle. Now, I, first of all, I'd like to know what we'll get for eighteen, fourteen, eight. And why aren't we looking at going back, buying our own equipment, taking our vehicle and our equipment to the local shop, having it put on and see what the difference is in prices? If this, if this whole deal of having ITS giving fully equipped vehicles when you buy them, it's such a good deal. How come nobody else in Hancock County? Everybody else in Hancock County buys a vehicle, they buy the equipment, they take it to the shop, it gets put on.
We did look at this evaluation two years ago, which is why we went to McGovern's because of the comparison that they had to offer in pricing compared to our local distributor. And we saved thousands of dollars per vehicle, which is why we did this arrangement to begin with, because we did look at that two years ago. That has not gone away. The whole reason behind doing this is a cost savings.
Sheriff, I, I had to, had to believe because price of those vehicles we got two years ago, forty-three thousand, we paid sixty-five, one, one of those, remember that? Somewhere in the neighborhood, sixty-nine thousand, all people, twenty-two thousand dollars we spent on one vehicle just to have it equipped.
And this is less
How did we save thousands of dollars?
Sheriff, you know, some, some of the costs, for example, when I first took over, they were charging us just for the striking package. We took it out to a local Bangos, right? It was three hundred and fifty dollars. That same deal now is two thousand. So the cost of piecemealing stuff out is expensive. And by buying them from a dealer like, like the caller was talking about, they buy stuff involved, so they get a better price and they pass our prices on. And when you were talking about Commissioner Parry about going forward, Commissioner Clark's plan was to take money each year in the budget, put it in the budget and put it in a reserve account. We've been working on that. Now this year, shame on us, we didn't put the hundred thousand dollars in there, we only put fifty thousand. But we have a reserve account that's already there. And we've talked about buying five vehicles. We're, we're not asking for five this year. I'm gonna run my vehicle another year. I've got almost eighty-nine thousand on mine, but I'm gonna run it another year to make it last. But if we take the money when we sell these and put that into that reserve account to supplement that, we're just, I guess, recycling tax money a second time. We're taking advantage of money that we have received from the citizens through taxes, putting it back in and reusing it again. So those are the ways that we are looking to, to save money.
Trading vehicles is not an option, right?
It, it isn't when we went through these distributors, which is why we've been private selling them or out to bid. You know, in some instances, we've gotten more for the vehicles that way, and in some instances, we've gotten less. It's, it's been about a wash in comparison to what we have traditionally got for those vehicles at trade-in. The only thing I could touch it on is the, the Ford Explorers, which this would be the last year cycling those out. Those have traditionally yielded a much lower trade-in value or private sale value than the Chevy, whether they're pickup trucks or Tahos that we've experienced.
Yeah, because I, I was looking at just based on our last group of sales. I don't see them generating sixty-two thousand four hundred. I don't think that's realistic.
And that's just the, the private sale values as they are today, so we had some of that.
Do, uh, the Silverado is done as a PPV? Let's see.
Say that again?
That Silverado fifteen hundred.
That's
Yeah, I know. Oh, I'm sorry. And it's done as a PPV?
No, it is a passenger car vehicle as it stands.
They do. Anyways, we buy that. They do make a Silverado PPV.
Oh, no, okay, I didn't understand your question. They, they do make a PPV Silverado.
So all, all, my only question, I know that that's not what the catch you're using, but what are, what are the cost differences between Tahos compared to Silverado? Like, maybe that would be different for some of the different people.
I never priced for no, Commissioner, so I don't, I have, I've never priced out one of the pickups, so I don't know. Can speak a little bit in that regard. The reason why we've gone to the Tahos is because the equipment that we do have to support, at least it's, it's in cover, it's accessible within the same vehicle. So for those reasons, that's why we've always gone to the SUV versus the, especially for that equipment.
And in the past, Traverse was also on that could be equipped in a PPV. I don't know, I couldn't, I couldn't find out whether the twenty-four, because it's been redesigned, is one of them.
Now it's in a more clear.
It's gonna be the twenty-three. So all I'd, all I wanna say is like, might at some point want to keep our minds open to vehicles changing if we can get into a more economical, smaller vehicle. I know you have to carry a lot of, but that might have to be a habit because the prices are unsustainable.
Please don't say a lack, correct?
And I hate to say it, because I know we're gonna get the rolled eyes in the room, but and I wouldn't suggest it for right now, but you know, the Chevy Blazer EV is being done as a PPV this year. It might not have the mileage right now that you guys would want, but I do think down the road, you should look at it because when I go through this book and I see all the oil changes and brakes, which seems to be like the vast majority of the repairs, that doesn't happen with EVs. So it's just something to keep in mind in the future. You're gonna get, you're gonna get longer mileage out of them. Pretty soon, you're gonna be looking at three hundred and fifty, four hundred mile a charge every day, and you'd be able to patrol with it, and you'd have some, she'd be able to get a lot of oil out of it, then you can I think we can rehash this all day and whatnot, but I'd like to move that we take this under advisement and make a decision in the next meeting. Anything else do you want to add to it?
Well, the only thing I would add is by, we've had a couple of meetings on it, and if we continue to do that, there's no reasonable expectation that these remaining vehicles at Quark is gonna be available again, you know. So we've, I know we've had a few opportunities to talk about it. I don't know what would change from another opportunity to talk about it in two weeks other than the potential possibility that these vehicles again would be available.
So I, I'm gonna do this. I, I'm gonna, was, was that a second? Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes, there is.
Was that a second?
Yeah, it's, it's
So, so I'm gonna move, there's a motion on the floor. Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna offer an amendment, just because I don't wanna.
Okay.
Uh, so I'm gonna move to amend the motion to read. Move to approve the purchase of four fully outfitted twenty-twenty-four P P V Chevy Tahos in the amount of two hundred and eighty-five, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-one cents from Island Tech Services as requested. And up to two thousand dollars payable to Brown's Communication for radio installation to be paid by, uh, paid for using ARPA funds. This is a sole source purchase based on the statements made by the Sheriff's Department concerning vehicle availability and cost savings using I T S. So that's my amendment. So there's no second. So that fails.
Okay. Call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Supposed to.
So two, one. Okay, now I'd like to offer something else up is I, I don't wanna step on any toes here, but I don't like the way this all came up. I'm gonna move that, you know, the twenty-twenty-five vehicles that we talked about purchasing and in, and at the end of this year, uh, that we utilize the, the purchasing policy. That's excellent. And that does, you know, I think it's, it's early enough in the process that if that doesn't work, we'll know it. So, uh, I'm gonna move to request that the Sheriff, Sheriff's Department follow the county's purchasing policy for the purchase of cruisers for the, uh, for twenty-twenty-five.
Side of the motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, we're gonna talk about this next meeting? Uh, I mean, this is like four, well, the motion passed, but, you know, it's gonna be a headache.
With all due respect, Commissioner, I, I don't know anything else to present. If there's something you'd like to know ahead of next meeting, by all means, you can send me, you know, but I, I don't know any other information to give, so.
And, and I would say to that Dakota, thank you for the information. I know you've got a lot of your page together. You wrote your report, you made your presentation, you made your case, you made your request. It's in our hands now for us to deliberate. And I would say, you know, stand down, allow us to do our due diligence. And I would remind you gentlemen that this is part of a one-point-three request from the Sheriff's Department from the remaining ARPA funds. If we don't do due diligence with this crap, then, and we, and we do the same lack of due diligence with the rest of this, good God, we're gonna spend one-point-three billion dollars and not do a good review?
How did we get to one-point-three? I thought last meeting you totaled it up and it was nine.
You've got I T bidding for you on some projects that were directed to you. Those are yours. So you add all those together, it's one-point-three million dollars.
I thought you totaled them up last time.
I, I agree that I T has taken all of those. I, I'm. The statement increased the amount that we had predicted for cruisers. Over half million. So, I mean, it's one-point-three. Take my word for it.
I, I did not hear the meeting with the, did you guys?
We haven't, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Do we wanna address that next or is there something else that you want to address?
There is like a D on there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One of the commissioners, really put, uh, Municipal Association Risk Management, it's a grant, it's a three-thousand-dollar grant. Um, I took the liberty of some writing it out. I'm looking to try to get twenty, uh, packages of what they are LED safety strobe lights for the deputies, not only for them on the craft scene, but they can be utilized for any emergency scene on any roadway. Um, these are little cones the size of a hockey puck. They come six-to-a package. Um, you can utilize them in any way. Uh, they're very bright, they're very durable. They can even be run over by a tractor trailer and they don't break. So with the weather here in Hancock County, sometimes we all know with fog in the situation, these things will pierce right through the fog, you can place them on a cone, the visibility is incredible. So with that, the three-thousand-dollar grant, if submitted and were granted the funding, the county would have to submit three thousand, three hundred dollars upfront, and then we would get the three-thousand-dollar check back with the grant.
Yes, I'm gonna move to approve the Sheriff's Office submitting a grant application for safety equipment to the Maine Municipal Association's Risk Management Services under the Ed McDonald Safety Grant Program for the purchase of twenty magnetic, it is twenty. Yeah. Twenty magnetic LED flare kits at a hundred and sixty-five dollars a kit for the total sum of three thousand, three hundred, and to authorize the Chair to sign the grant application on the head of the count.
Second of the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. You had that, I am, oh, Michael, you had it, send the signature.
We'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've got more, but move.
On the agenda.
So, we should provide you guys with a packet, um, that I suspect you've already been given. However, there is one additional document from the back of that packet that is an email received this morning prior to the Commissioners' meeting from the State Police, which again detailed what was in that packet that's provided. Uh, but it just again reiterates their proposal.
So this is what we already have accepted last week?
Correct. So again, outlines their proposal that I had, uh, put in the, the document for you guys yesterday. That was received this morning, uh, we just, uh, just before eight or so.
So, I just briefly scanned this and I, I read over a couple of times what was sent yesterday. So basically, we were given this, uh, here's an agreement. Your agreement expires the end of the week, Sunday, so sign this agreement.
We were basically presented a take it or leave it offer.
Yeah, that, so my reading is correct. So, I said we leave it. I mean, uh, we, I don't see any upside signing it. We've been told in the past, uh, that, you know, the State Police wouldn't leave us high and dry. Uh, you know, me, I don't.
This is their way of saying, you know, they're not gonna leave us high and dry, but this is what we're willing to, to offer you and.
Yeah, so I personally don't see the hurry in signing this. Time might be on our side. If it isn't, we got nothing to lose. Uh, it came in after the meeting deadline. I'm not ready to sign that agreement.
The only thing, um, that I would bring to your attention is, is absent, uh, agreement to this moving forward, I don't know how we continue to call Sheriff beyond Sunday until an agreement would be reached. If it's not, um, and I think both agencies appear in this part, it's really not feasible, um, both for the deputy trooper supervisor scheduling to try to makeshift of some status quo that we're doing now under this new schedule that they're, they're going to be working. It, it doesn't, um, there's no correlation between what they were working previously, what they're switching to and, and what we have. So it would, it would conflict, um, if we were to do it long-term. Some of the benefits with, uh, taking over the law enforcement responsibilities for calls in Hancock County is that, uh, you know, if somebody called looking for help, they would know that the Sheriff's Office is, is gonna be handling it, right? They know, they would know that one agency's handling it. There wouldn't be a question of who's handling it that day or vice versa. Um, we could provide that coverage right now with the staffing that we do have. Now, that would, in essence, spread us thin to a degree. I think I've outlined what that would look like at the end of that, as far as what we would look for staffing in the future, uh, in order to maintain that, if that's what we decided to do. Um, ultimately, you know, I, I've had an opportunity to speak with everybody from the tenants down and the sheriff off and the sheriff's office, kind of get their stance on it and ask what, you know, this is what we're being presented. What would you like to see happen? Cuz ultimately, it's gonna affect them the most and then trickle down to the citizens of Hancock County. So I've had that opportunity to, to speak with them, um, but ultimately, you know, with given these options and kind of an ultimatum, um, we wanted to bring it to your attention and bring it to you guys to ultimately make that decision.
And I, I say that's not a decision to make. Now, this is a working relationship agreement between two agencies. This is not a law enforcement contract that we'd have with, with the town, the statute. Now, I think it's important that we, we continue to be updated on what's going on and what agreements they have and so on. But this is not for us to sign. This is for the sheriff, the lieutenant, survey, negotiate. They can come to an agreement, sign an agreement. If they're not, well, just agree to disagree, because this is not for us to.
Well, my feelings, I'm not ready to sign it. Well, you know, it's got yesterday.
But you're not gonna sign at all.
Yeah.
You're not gonna sign this. Thank you for the update. Good luck. But that's not from, that's out of that purview. The sheriff's responsible for the operation of that department. And if he needs to enhance that with an agreement with the State Police, that's between he and the State Police. This is identical to the situation with you and the chief deputy several months ago. It's between you and them. It's not for us. Thank you for the update, but.
Well, eventually it could, because they might need extra staff.
That's, that's, that's gonna be the net effect, Paul. And as far as this agreement and, and what happened, you know, that's the last thing that the Sheriff's Office needs right now is the three of us to get involved in this and do its mission.
And that's, I understand that Commissioners, that's why we were, uh, presenting this to, is to provide you an update and, you know, advise that we are in the past, you know, in the citizens of Hancock County in that regard are in mind and, and our own staff here at the Sheriff's Office. Um, if we are unable to come to an agreement ahead of Sunday and we do, uh, just be taking on law enforcement responsibilities for Hancock County, um, as, as Commissioner Clark outlined, we would be looking at, you know, requesting an additional, uh, position that's unbudgeted uh, this year and an additional one at the turn of next year in order to maintain that level. So that's why, you know, I wanted to, to bring this to your attention so that we have that on record and maybe, I guess, be kind of in the back of your mind.
Well, what I, sorry, Sheriff, I, I just gonna say, we have, nothing has been proposed really in, in the form of an agreement. Just email that we received. These, these negotiations, and I use that term loosely, uh, have been going on for a couple of months. Uh, and now it's just to the point, and what really bothers me about it, it's very simple to solve it. If they just would budge on one item, they will not patrol or assign a deputy to slot one. They flat out refuse to do that. So one of the proposals we have is that they would send somebody to slot one and then we rotate, okay? We have slot one this week, then we move over to slot two and three, then we're three and one. What I, part of our goal is to do what they are advocating, is try to keep our people as close together as we possibly can. So if we have slot one and two, you know, for a week, we've got help close by. We've got two and three, and the only time is we have that one week when we have somebody in slot one and slot three. And they won't budge. They will absolutely not go to slot one and, and their rationale is that it's too far to go. So we had a trooper down here the other day, um, from Monson, that had made an O U I arrest in Hancock County. So what's your response time from Monson? You know, my argument has always been, to get to slot one, you can get down Route fifteen in the Bucksport. And they have a trooper that lives in the Bucksport area, in my understanding now. So, um, so their other argument was, well, we can come down one A or we can get down Route nine. Well, you know, Route fifteen's a two-way street too. And one of my, one of the things that bothers me, I think they're doing this because of the, the, where the troopers that currently have reside, right?
Right, and their, their response to that is, you know, well, maybe in the future we'd be able to take more of Hancock County. Well, the reality is, is they openly advertise now that they're teen staffing. You apply to us, you don't have them. Well, the reason we've expanded our residency requirement is to open up our pool for applicants. They're unwilling to assign somebody from Hancock County to slot one as it is. Well, I have news. There's no, there's not a huge influx of certified officers in Hancock County, which we've experienced and we've taken measures to address. So the likelihood of them employing certified law, law enforcement officers in Hancock County to.
Is decreased.
Is decreasing. So, you know, their statement of, well, maybe this will improve in the future. I look at that as a, as a slim to none option.
Well, I, to be honest, I see them, you know, they keep talking about the health and welfare and safety of their officers. What about the health, safety and, uh, of ours?
Well, I, I appreciate that too.
You know, because what's happening is, you know, maybe I'm, I don't, maybe I don't have a good read on this, but I think they're just transferring their problem to us.
And, and it is that in a sense. They have, you know.
I mean, it's a working relationship, but still.
Well, they have a trooper, uh, they have multiple troopers that, uh, live in Lemoine area. They have a trooper that lives in Bucksport. They have a trooper that lives in Castine or a corporal that lives in Castine. Their response is that their corporals and sergeants don't handle calls, so you can't count that one in Castine. And that in regards to the troopers that live in Lemoine or Bucksport, they, they bring it to a worst-case scenario and say, well, if I had to assign a trooper to slot one from Newport. Well, the reality is you have people that live closer. And for me to provide coverage to slot one around the clock, which I've been forced to do because of their refusal to cover slot one, I'm assigning that coverage to people that live in Ellsworth or Bucksport. So it's certainly doable. But they're, they're saying that it's a good op, option that they're willing to entertain and basically a take it.
So how does involving our delegation do anything for, as far as State Police?
I don't understand. Let's just play just has this hands-off approach for the State Police. It's almost like we have no authority. That's been going on for two, three years, Troy.
Keep in mind if I speak to her.
Absolutely. Um, I might be out of line here.
So I appreciate it, Commissioners. Sorry to even jump in on this one, but this one I.
No, if you could, come on. Boy, I'm TV.
This one, uh, this one touches me by modern vehicles, trust me. Uh, as Sheriff of Poronska County and vice versa, let me share, so she's, we've lived this for quite some time. Um, I, I agree with the Sheriff Clark's, uh, uh, concept that this is the sheriff's decision to, to address the agreement. That part, the Commissioner's responsibility, I think, is to get with us, get legislators to change. They have, they, I, I think criminal justice spoke loud and clear in the last two sessions that they are very concerned about how the State Police has essentially stepped back and put this back onto the counties. How does it affect you folks is your Sheriff, me, everybody are gonna come to our county Commissioners expecting local taxpayers to pay for this. This part right now is even more bothersome that I actually, as much as I almost didn't want to do it, I went down and supported the State Police in this last legislative session to the governor's supplemental budget. In her supplemental budget, she put money aside for the troopers so that they could maintain, maintain their current agreements, particularly in Washington and Hancock County. Uh, in Poronska, we had a tremendous issue with this because we heavily relied on this resource sharing agreement. And the pulling back of that meant that I was coming back to my Commissioners and trying to get them to fund the exposition, which to me wasn't fair that it puts it on the burden of the taxpayer solely of Poronska County. So I think, uh, Sheriff, I think legislators spoke pretty, oh, it, it was an unbelievable, well, to the point, Commissioners, if I can, if you don't mind. Last session, Poronska County was on our own with a bill. We were in with all of you.
Yeah, you had a car.
All of the associations, and we put a bill on the side. A, a Democrat and a Republican that just shows you how much support there is for this, trying to resolve this. And we put that bill and we put it on the table to the side and said, we would rather be with the association together to have this resolved. You either fund the State Police, the numbers that they need to maintain good, strong relationships and resource sharing, or you divert state funds to the county and contract with us, just like you do some of our small towns that contract with us. Stop putting that whole burden on them. Have it either way. And legislators, um, uh, in the middle of the mess said, you know, because certain counties didn't put in, certain counties didn't speak up, uh, this isn't fair that we have one county alone by itself. That bill died. Poronska County's all by itself came forward and said, um, absolutely. We're gonna fund Poronska County, I think it was three positions, I might be wrong. This was two or three positions out of last year's budget. It was in the eleventh hour under appropriations that they called me and said, Sheriff, what if we just don't change anything right now? We pause this. And I said, look, I wasn't here to cause wars, but we cannot continue to put this on the property taxpayer. As you folks live every day, we only get our funding from one area, property tax. The states that you hear today, it's on the radio again today, transfer. Property tax. The states that you hear today, it's on the radio again today, transportation money is being dealt with, which is a part of where the state's getting their funds and others. I thought last year, to answer directly to your question, I thought legislators clearly spoke loudly. Saying this is not going to be tolerated anymore. You can't change your mission without even the criminal justice uh committee knowing what the new direction of the state is. And and I think our sheriffs were on the on the fence of, if you want to change your direction to your mission of the state police, that's okay. We still want to be partners. But the burden of the cost shouldn't be solely on the on the property taxpayers. That's where I've been at. So I I hope um that there is still money. There was. I I forget the number right now, but there's money that's been set aside in this supplemental budget that went before appropriations to fund and maintain the levels. Uh, the lieutenant spoke clearly. I was in the same situation two years ago informing my commissioners. Hey, here's the challenge for us. And what this really means is if we just say yes, let's let's just walk away. Great. We're going to try to cover the cells. Your challenge is that they will only cover calls that come directly to them. I think your RCC directors here or RCC directors here, where are those calls going to come? They all come to the sheriff's office that it is. They're not getting those phone calls, even nine one one calls now diverted away from the state are coming solely to the county. So those are county calls. And so if we walk away. And I say we, because we could be in this very same, like at the end of this year, I actually had a piece of legislation last year that mandated. That they not change Ponson County's. Until the end of twenty five. And um that they also report back out to criminal justice, what is the relationship with every single county. And so I I would be shocked to see them attempt to move your. Agreement today because it it is the wrong thing to do. Uh, there's a supplemental money that's supposed to take care of it. And I spoke to this, I testified to this. Particularly to Washington and Hancock Counties because we share a lot of those same troopers. I think that's part of the problem. Um, and I actually think Ponson County's probably put a little burden on on Hancock and Washington County by them saying, I I have to cover Ponson. I have to. And they actually dropped that was we have six zones. Uh, as you guys know, Elijah, land Nasa area, and we're doing four and two. So I'm sorry to go on so long, but we're passionate about this. I think for you folks, the real challenge is here is um. We've got to get main county commissioners to stay as a whole. We struggled at times on that uh jail funding, right? This is no different. Uh, I think legislators are there to listen. We've just got to make them make it clear that we're we're good either way. Your sheriffs will pick this up. We'll hire new people, we'll buy new cap powers. But it's not going to be done solely on the property taxpayers.
So how do we do that? Through the main chief, your your president of the main chiefs?
Main sheriffs.
Main sheriffs.
I'm I'm the vice president of main sheriffs.
Okay, so the main. Main chiefs has have. Some. Dog in the fight to.
They kind of really don't have nothing to do with it. Uh, the main sheriffs. The the main chiefs, the, you know, they're representing their towns. We so we may by provide support to them. The state police may provide some support to them. Uh, but it's, they're not really in it. That to me, the real issue has to become our main county commissioners association. Needs to continue to have a loud voice with MSA. To our legislators, who I do think, I think that's probably what's changed some of the. Uh, that's changed is they're listening now. And it was evident last year when in criminal justice, they sided with us.
So so. Got to lean on main sheriffs.
I'm I'm thinking of this.
We have a rep, the the main county commissioners association needs to to let them know.
To hear that.
So we just simply need to like.
So the sheriff. What I'm going to say is that part of the problem is that it affects us small rural counties. But when you go to Southern Maine, you know, Cumberland County, York County and and the bigger. They're doing the majority of work and they don't do calls here. A lot of the other counties have gotten out of it, but we have stood fast that we we just try and not pass pass that on. To the taxpayer. Troy's, you know, you know, we look at a roost stick, but they have the same problem, so. It's it's really difficult, but we do need um somebody from the main county commissioners to. To man up and start saying, look, we we can't keep doing this. MSA's fought this battle. We fought the battle with jails. Uh, and, you know, it it just seems to fall on deaf ears, but I I agree with Sheriff Morton. That the last time we were down there testifying, that we we see people around the table nodding their head, that yeah, this is a problem. It needs to be addressed, but it wasn't.
I just had one thing to add that we transfer. Over a thousand calls, probably closer to two thousand calls a year to the state police, the law enforcement calls and the slots that we're not covering at those times. So that's, that would be an additional burden to the sheriff's department uh of the. Twenty-one people they have providing two thousand additional calls of just a long quarter complaints. As well, something about that, that's that's another burden.
So in that regard, we are unable to come to a workable agreement for both agencies. Ahead of Sunday, I think that our only action forward to be to plan on. Uh, ahead of Sunday, beyond Sunday to cover law enforcement responsibilities for the county. Now, obviously, it's a discussion that we'll have in further detail and we'll. Certainly revisit it again with the state between now and then to see if we can come to some type of workable or viable option for both agencies and their employees. Um, but if that is uh not an option, then we continue to stay at impasse, you know, uh staffing wise. I'll I'll work it out on a schedule to to make it work. But I would anticipate that if that's still the case, you know, two weeks, a month from now, that. I'd be back up here asking for an additional position in order to alleviate that because it's not, um, like I said, we would be spread thin going into the summer. We would. Um. We we'd have a difficult time. So those are the options that we're kind of faced with. Unfortunately, it's kind of a a take it or leave it ultimatum that we've been presented.
Well, what if we just say no? I mean, I know that's not our symbol. What if you just say no? What happens?
So I've I've asked.
Call, what happens?
Yeah, I've asked that.
Get there when we did it.
Right now, uh, our current agreement is. Right now, our current agreement is depending on the shift. Um, the state police will take a third and that area that of the responsibility might vary shift to shift. Obviously, um, with their new schedule that they're going to conflicting scheduled times and such, that's not a viable option for a multitude of reasons. Um, one for dispatchers to keep track of both on state and county uh sides. But deputies and troopers, supervisor scheduling, because what would that would look like is you'd start your shift responsible for one area in the county. Pathway through your shift or a couple hours in, you'd then transfer to another area of the county and it would just be a constant wheel. Um, so I think the only way to ensure that the citizens of Hancock County receive or are guaranteed a. That an agency is responsible for their calls when they do call for help would be to say, okay, we're going to take on that responsibility and provide police coverage for the the citizens of Hancock County.
But in absence of an agreement. Somebody's got to have the statutory. Is got to have.
Unfortunately, I think that falls to the county is my understanding, and I think that Sheriff and. Uh, Sheriff Morton might be able to speak to that, but my understanding is that the state, the state police has no statutory obligation. To take a part of our county. That has been always done by means of agreements. So, you know, on Sunday, it's would fall to us if the state says.
Yeah, essentially, their their statute, their uh statute under the main state police, it's a little clearer than it actually is the sheriffs. To show that they are responsible for rural patrol, highway patrol, remote investigations, but it doesn't say how that's delivered. So the deliverable is what we're talking about. How do those services get delivered? They're delivered through these folks. Where do the calls come from? And as he can tell you, over years, many of those calls used to come to your sheriff's offices because he's dispatching fire EMS. So those calls traditionally become the sheriff's. I don't think that's ever changed. It's probably been there for for decades.
So so my question is really this, you get a call. You know, and s- some remote part of the county that that we've been relying on, the state police that. You get a call. We can't respond and they can't respond. Who was, who has a statutory obligation to 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 fulfill it? State police, right?
My understanding is it falls on us, add it to the list, and basically we get to it when we get to it. Unfortunately, that's not a a very lit responsible.
Sheriff Morton said that they, I know we're talking delivery and. But really, under statute, doesn't the main state police have the obligation to respond to that call?
As well as we do. So but if the call, yes. So if the call comes to us, we have the same responsibility to provide those law enforcement services.
Okay.
And it really becomes, that's why I said deliverables, as who does it come to to initiate the start? And so they said, we'll take all calls that will come to us, but they're they're going to have a limited amount of calls that actually come into.
Can't we root them to them?
We we do now. We do now because they have, they have state slot thirty, which is nine hundred and something square miles, I figured out. That if if a call is on Route one Hancock, of course, the ride driver. We're pretty much like bing boom, we send it to them, tell them, hey, it's Hancock, you're on. Joe said it's on, he's on Route one Hancock, we're good, plane headed toward Washington County. But.
Mine.
We're down, our hands are are out and they've got fraction.
Mine should probably that is, we're the nine one dispatch, so we receive enough.
So we're going to get the call and if they're not going to take that call, we have to, we have to process it as well, not only give it away, but now we have to. Get out the questions and then we pass it to.
Why can't that, I know it comes here. Because, I mean, isn't that what?
I think that.
Different P S have been arguing probably that's the call.
So so we, as a P S, we're for nine one calls especially, we are responsible to notify the. Agency that has jurisdiction.
And what I.
And and.
I'm trying to root the call before you get it.
I don't think.
No, without changing the framework of nine one, it's it's no way.
I like that idea, but.
That's what I was trying to.
I'm I'm in favor of that. I just, I don't.
But but unfortunately, what's going to happen, and it happens now, is that somebody in Hancock who deals with both state police and the sheriff's office calls the state police first, which happens. A lot. They're going to say, well, it's not our area and they're going to transfer it to us. So we're going to deal with it.
So that's where we're at. If we're at an impasse, you might see me in a month from now saying, hey, we need an additional position or two to be able to sustain this.
Because I appreciate the uh. The information because I never really understood how it works and like you explained it so well, like now I have a vision of like how it works with it, so.
And if we.
And I'll say that's true, you know, even though right now you're annoyed with where the car thing is. Uh, I appreciate it all, working my explanation and everything.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you. Great time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
R C C. Oh, no.
Anything to add to your monthly report?
Uh, no, any questions?
Move to accept and file maintenance monthly report is presented. Second.
Listen, favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, gentlemen, sheriff steps update. Uh, we have the snow melt that's been piped in to complete.
Just set up?
Expect, yeah. After the last, well, we expect this to last snowstorm of the year. But we should be set for all uh future events and we look forward to to those steps being a lot better and safer. And with that happening, we've got. Uh, main controls. To to. Fire button, figure the controls. And then we've got only the railing and the finish work. For the stairs portion of it. Now, we do have the uh order in and in production. The new uh. Storefront entryway and windows are sort of important to that beginning.
How's that activated? Is it just by?
Yeah, so we've got a hot water loop that comes off the steam. A heat exchanger. It's just a water that we heat with steam in a big tube. And that does. Uh, that serves the sheriff's office in. The area on the rig by my office and the one down the garage. And the one that goes down the garage. Uh, is what they tapped into for water. So they just run that through another heat exchanger that has antifreeze in it. The steps.
But you're you're asking what turns it on?
Oh, yeah.
Is there a sensor?
Yeah, there'll be a community and temperature sensing.
Okay, I I actually did that, our business.
Yep.
And what I'm using is a Wi-Fi switch to turn it on.
Sure. Is it electric or hydraulic?
Hydraulic.
That cool. Is it working well?
It's working a lot better. The sensor wasn't.
Ga plumbing.
Uh, yes, so we have the updated list from the the supplier and E O Shae has agreed to let us deal with the supplier directly. Uh, which is a big. They kind of sacrifice a little bit of money uh by doing that, but it allows us to deal directly with them. Uh, when warranty issues come up in the future. Just have to have a call, E O Shae, and they kind of. Uh, were shy about getting in the business of responding to our. Troubles while it's under warranty or their product is under warranty. So we've got a price coming for Nookles Plumbing and one from uh. Uh, Micron Electric and we should have that stage one price ready for you, boy, I hope by the next beginning. And uh. Any questions?
Questions? Right. That's it?
Yeah, thank you.
Anything to add to your monthly report?
I don't. It's like the file R C C monthly report is presented.
Second. Listen, favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Actually, she was hiding behind.
Thanks, sure anything for us?
No, it's exaggeration.
Move to uh accept and approve the month. Paying bills already. Move to accept and file a given resources monthly report is presented.
Listen, favor.
Hi. Move to accept and approve the monthly bills and warrants is presented.
Second. Listen, favor.
Hi.
Got it? Hi. Right. We are. Copy your text really caught.
Yeah, these new, these other two were discussed in the last meeting.
In their workshop, one is to replace that one here and the other one's the one that's up in the commissioners slash treasurer's office.
So I'm going to move to approve the purchase of one Xerox Versa like C four. C four fifteen printer copier be located in the commissioners' meeting room for a sum of sixteen hundred dollars to be paid for with our funds.
Second. Listen, favor.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
I moved to approve the purchase of one Xerox Versa like C seventy one. Multi-function printer to be located in the commissioners treasurer's office for the sum of four thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. To be paid for with our funds.
Second. Listen, favor.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Right, and we have an executive session.
Move to go in the executive session is provided by one, by M R S, M R S A title one. Section four oh five six A for exempt employee evaluation. R C C director.
Second. Listen, favor.
Hi.
Hi.